I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission regular meeting scheduled for Thursday, February 8th. We please rise, pay your respects with the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Can we note the role?
Noted.
We have a few statements from Mr. Sharp. Item number four, approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the Charter Township of Oxford regular planning commission meeting for February 8, 2018. I'll second that motion.
Been moved by Mr. Curtis, second by Mr. Noel. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item five, approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular planning commission meeting minutes for January 11, 2018. I'll second.
Been moved by Mr. Curtis, second by Mr. Noel. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item number six, public comments not scheduled for this or not on the agenda, not scheduled. Seeing none, move on to item seven, commissioner's comments. Mr. Spitz?
None.
Ms. Rosberg?
None.
Mr. Humber?
I have no comment.
Mr. Berger?
I have no comment.
Mr. Noel?
No comment.
Mr. Curtis?
Only one, tough winters back June 2nd, 3rd, just preparing documents to get everybody prepared and plan for that event. That's it.
All right, thank you. Where will that be at?
Keen at gravel pit.
In place, right?
Yeah.
He's got three years on there, right?
Year by year.
Year by year. Okay, item eight, public hearings, there are none. Items nine, unfinished business. Eight, master plan, first completed draft. Okay, so.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm all right, everybody.
Good. So, everybody took a good long read this week?
Yeah, I'd like to just briefly go over what was changed from the last draft and then go into the last chapter, which is the zoning implementation, zoning implementation plan. So, the only changes were in the land use plan chapter. If you go to page 87, it's in the actual master plan document on the screen. Page 87, multiple family residential. You recall the previous, we had a discussion about the two tiers of multiple family residential. Previously, they were set at five and 10. This new draft has them at four and eight. And I did conduct another brief multi, multiple family analysis that I attached, attached to this packet. And it went through four different projects that were recently looked at by the planning commission. And the four and eight dwelling unit per acre limits were pretty consistent with what, were actually less than what the projects that came in were at. So, I wanted to just see if you had any comments about these, these new tiers, the four and eight dwelling units per acre? And if not, we can, we can leave them.
I, I thought when you gave the examples of the different locations, you used Abbey Ridge in there, you used Hills of Oxford in there. And I thought that when we looked at what was actually there, I thought when we made those examples of four and eight previously, they all fit pretty good. I mean, I mean, it looked like, I mean, so I think what came out of the draft was actually pretty good.
Out of this current?
Yeah. Well, we made the modifications and we, we took it down from 10 to 8 because we all thought 10 was a little bit too much in the multiple district and stuff. So, I'm pretty pleased with what happened there. I think it turned out quite nice.
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm good.
And then, so the future land use map, we modified that. If you recall, last meeting, we went through the different properties and figured out which tier they were in.
Yeah.
So, the revised future land use map has those two different tiers in it now, basically.
So, I thought it turned out quite nice for what I think would be a good representation for the township to work with.
And then, the only other modification was the village mixed use. And the previous draft had residential density of 10. This has now been reduced to 8, just to be consistent with the.
Yeah, and I think that's a good move there today.
So, were there any, did you have any comments on the land use plan chapters, the modifications that were made here?
I have none.
Okay. Now, we can move on to the final chapter, which is the zoning and implementation plan. It starts on page 111. So, the purpose of this chapter is to highlight some implementation strategies that the township can use to actually implement divisions. And we're required by the zoning enabling act to include a zoning plan. And the main section of this on page 115 is the zoning, or the future land use zoning correlation table. So, this takes all of the future land use categories that we have in the plan and aligns them with the current zoning district, current zoning districts, and then highlights areas where there are inconsistencies. So, the biggest inconsistencies are with the mixed use categories simply because we don't have any, as well as the multiple family tiers. Since right now, we only have one multiple family designation. So, the plan highlights some strategies on the next page, the next couple of pages to further align the zoning ordinance with the master plan. So, one, there's three zoning designation or district changes that are proposed. One, the first is to create two different multiple family districts, so splitting up the current RN district into two with the various densities. The second is to create a village mixed use district that is intended to implement the mixed use, village mixed use, future land use category, and then create an industrial commercial mixed use, which is similar to the industrial commercial mixed use, future land use. So, it talks about, includes recommendations for including design guidelines for those mixed use districts. And then, I also included some, some adjustments based on conversations that we've had really at the ordinance review subcommittee level, including adjustments to the PUD ordinance to strengthen the eligibility criteria, to go back and look at special land uses and permitted land uses, make sure that we're including all the land uses that we want to regulate and allow in the township, as well as a form, a potential formatting change to put all of the uses in an easy to read table so that an applicant can come and see if, see if the land use is there, if it's there, figure out which district it's permitted. It's just a, making the zoning ordinance a little bit more user friendly, as well as rezoning standards, signage, solar energy, everything that we're talking about in ordinance review, or not everything, but a lot of the big items to put in the master plan as potential Chapter goes on to talk about some other potential ordinance, ordinance changes outside of the zoning ordinance, such as relooking at the land division ordinance, which we're actually doing right now as well, potentially creating woodland and tree protection ordinance, which we don't have, as well as more detail on this urban service area that's in the master plan, creating some, some more policy, another document that could go into more detail. And then, it concludes with economic development strategies, including reference to the one-stop-ready program, which is, I think, important to include because the county's going to be reviewing this, it's important to show that we're aiming to, to meet their goals as well. And finishes with some funding and budgeting, as well as guidelines and requirements for updating the plan. So, that's the complete draft, first draft. I'm sure we'll have more changes, but it's good to have all of the text there. So, if you have any comments, please let me know. Bert?
Well, more dramatic is, you know, when we look at the village mixed use and we also look at the industrial commercial mixed use, how hard is it then to get up to speed with what, within those different districts, what kind of regulatory conditions we're going to have to have? I mean, I mean, I mean, we create a district and then what happens?
Well, the, the purpose of this is to get the, get our foot in the door and allow us to explore creating a mixed use, mixed use district.
Right.
So, I mean, we don't want, we don't want to get too detailed here because there, there's obviously going to be some workshopping that we're going to do. But for the village mixed use districts, the purpose is to allow flexibility in land uses, particularly residential and commercial in the same property.
So, I'm getting to, I guess, more directly, then how do we get to that planning coordinated effort to do that?
Well, we have to, we think there's going to be some budgeting involved there.
Well, that's okay.
So.
I mean, I don't want to create something, I, I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to feel this out to where I am definitely for some mixed use district. I think it's viable with what's happening around us and everywhere else too. But, and I guess they're good ideas to, I guess you said put your foot in the door, but if we created it, then what happens? We gotta go further with it.
It's gonna be, this has to be a coordinated effort with the township board to ensure that, to ensure that they're, like every other ordinance review, they want, we want to make sure that they're okay with it before we spend a lot of money creating this district.
That's kind of where I'm.
Yeah.
So, are we going to get to do that?
Well, we, if we want to get started with it, I come up with a proposal about how much it would take to create, explore this district. But the actual, the standards, that's something that we have to, starting with ordinance review, come up with.
Yeah, I'm just talking out loud.
Yeah, no, it's, I mean, it's, good point, that's the point of implementation, is how do we, we've got to move forward with it.
Okay, I know where I was said it. How do we get to that point? I'm for the districts, I'll say that. So, we're just considering it right now.
Yeah.
Or this is a recommendation.
Well, the, the master.
Just moving forward with a recommendation to the township board?
Well, not yet. I mean, if that's, once you have had a chance to look at it then thoroughly, the next step for you, for the planning commission, is to make a recommendation to the township board. Then, they look at it and if they're okay with it, they approve it for distribution, sending it to adjacent communities, according by the zoning enabling, or the planning enabling act. And then, after the 63 days, we have a public hearing at the planning commission. I'll have to double check to see if we have to send it back to the township board for their final adoption. But if you're talking just specifically about these zoning adjustments, one thing I can do is add, add a section underneath these, you know, these multiple family density, village mixed use and industrial commercial, saying what the next step should be. So, it would be a coordinated effort with the planning commission, the township board to okay the exploration of these districts.
Yeah, I think you need to put, maybe throw that note in.
Okay, and that's, I mean, that's a pretty simple.
Because they're going to say, well, wait a minute, you know, I mean, I don't think it's clear all the time, oh, we have to move forward to get something in place.
And really, what some other communities have done is they actually create a separate plan, like a subarea plan, that would focus on these areas. And that plan can go into a lot more detail about the type of design that you want, the type of uses that you want. So, that could be, I could potentially add that under the next steps, explore subarea plan, and then add the parties that are involved.
Yeah, you can go all the way down to each age and everyone, you know, you can go and go.
And that's too, that's just too detailed for the master plan. But that's, that's definitely a great step to take is to look at a more detailed plan. And that, and I can add, I can add that to the master plan as well.
Rosberg?
Yeah, a couple things. On the chart where we compare the zoning districts, was the plan to make our ordinance meet that or our master plan, we're doing our ordinance, I mean, they're separate areas, but they're basically saying the same thing?
You're talking about this chart here?
Yeah, where you're comparing, like, you know, hunt country to.
Right. Well, the, the. The point was to see where, we have our master plan, that's where we want to be.
Right.
And that's page 115. And comparing it to the zoning districts, the current zoning districts, to see where there are gaps.
Yeah.
So, the, the point is to, the intent is to then go back and change the zoning ordinance to try to be consistent with the future land use designations.
Okay. That's okay. So, as we're doing our ordinance amendments, we're moving towards that terminology in there?
That terminology, you know, you're moving, you're trying to move towards the goals, the, the future land use designations.
Right.
So, you know, for example, the multiple family, we're, we're planning for two districts, but right now, we only have one. So, the goal is to sometime in the future, relook at our multiple family zoning districts and explore splitting it into two to be consistent with the future land use designation.
Yeah, I'd like, you know, just comparing some that are just identical right now, where it hasn't changed for ordinance.
Yeah.
Zoning map already matches our future land use map.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, a lot of the residential.
We can just change the terminology now, like, you know, we.
Oh, you're talking just the actual name of the district?
Yeah, like hunt country agriculture, you call it acres. And then, you have one agriculture. It's, it's the exact same district.
Yeah, and that was, this was carried over from the last plan.
Right.
You know, I'm, I'm not.
You go with it then too, and it never got changed, and I thought we were going to?
I, I, I got kind of actually confused with hunt, hunt country.
Country?
You know, I'm not tied to the names, I just, I just carried it over from the last plan. So, if you want to just name hunt country agricultural, the future land use districts as, as just agricultural.
No, I think the whole push was to stress the hunt country. We're supposed to be changing our zoning district to say, instead of agriculture, it was supposed to say hunt country agriculture, right? The point was to change the zoning district to match the master, or the future land use. So, in areas where they do that, is there a reason why we wouldn't consider just, and this is going to ordinance review, but we're trying to tie these two together.
Yeah, I mean, I.
To look at ordinance review and the ones that are, are almost identical now, call that that now. If that is in that, if it's already in the future land use area and it's zoned exactly like it would be for the future land use, we should change the zoning designation currently to the future, so we know how far we, we have to go.
I mean, I think it's a good idea to be consistent with your master plan. So, as long as the, as long as the lot standards and dimensions are the same.
Right. Yeah, where it's already.
Forward, everyone.
Our future, we should say so, that way we know what's different. I don't know, I was just looking at that. It's confused a lot of people when they looked at that because it says, well, it says the same zoning, but it's called two different things. I don't understand what's different. How do we convert it from agriculture to hunt country agriculture? Why do you want to do that?
Well, if you want to do it just so that, like Kelly said, that your property owners are confused.
That's a question I've got many times.
Yeah, because you could be planned, if you're planned rural residential, you're likely zoned suburban farms.
Yes.
And then, the terminology can get confusing. Because a lot, I mean, a lot of property owners and regular residents, citizens don't know necessarily the difference between planning and zoning. So, it's important, it's important that you're linking the two together because they are related.
Plus, doesn't also drive questions, sorry, Mr. Cherry, that if, if it's zoned today ag, what does hunt country agriculture mean to them?
Right.
If they own the property today, so, or if you have suburban farms, what does acreage estate mean? Is it going to change their zoning in the future? You got to come in, somebody come in and say, okay, I see, it's, this is what I'm zoned today, but this is what's your future land use.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Well, what, what happens between, what's going to happen to convert me to that? Yeah.
Are you going to change what I own today to something else? It's really a question.
Yeah.
If, if, you know, for most of the public out there, they're not as versed in zoning plan as you mentioned, so they're going to say, okay, what is the difference? Why are they different? Because they can see a difference, right? But what we're saying is they're not necessarily different, we're just changing the terminology of what we call in most cases. So, they need to be somewhat consistent where we can make them consistent.
So, I mean, that, if the planning commission, if there's consensus that you, you want to aim for that, that's, it's all we need to do is simply add that as a zoning adjustment, says align future land use districts and zoning districts, align the names for Oxford.
Well.
But that's just if everybody wants it.
What's, what's the problem with saying hunt country estate slash SF3 suburban farms? I mean, how come you can't have it like combined? I mean, is that just too much at one time?
I think it's, it's too much. And when you, when you start getting into like SF, SF2 is very, is a very zoning type term.
Well, that's what I'm kind of used to. So, for me, that's what I've been familiar with most of my life and what I do with a lot of the things. But I know from the public point of view, then there is confusion.
Yeah. I think the most important thing is to include the acreage size in the, in the title.
Yeah.
Because that's what really sticks. Rather than, you could say hunt country estates, but you don't.
Either way.
But if you say hunt country estates 10 acres, you're like, all right, I know it's 10 acre minimum. So, that, it's up to you, if you want to include that as a potential zoning adjustment to align the names, it's as simple as that.
Just from my perspective, I think we need to be consistent.
Well, that, that was my point. From my perspective, we do too, because the whole philosophy in it is to change. When we're, we're changing the designation to what these are called, we're showing the desire to have these things, to maintain the rural residential feel, to maintain the hunt country focus and the agriculture. And I think it ties exactly to what the land uses and everything else should stem from. So, you know, it might just be a name, but I think it has a lot of meaning behind it.
Yeah.
My other question is the data, I know I had talked about this before. You know, I, I looked up the data and I saw the change in growth. You know, we gained 13,000 people since 1990, it's 112% increase. My data's more current than yours, and the data that you're having here, I think it's from 2005, I skipped up to that here, didn't write down my specific name. It's quite old. And we have updated data.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's a good point, because we started this like two or three years ago.
Yeah, and we have the current data is in, the census information, all that's in. I'd like to see and read down with the current data, I think it's an eye opener. All right. Which lead.
Well, he pulled the data out of 2015, Semco. Isn't that where you got it from?
Actually 14, but we're already in 2018.
Well, all the census data will remain the same because that's 2010. But there's some, there's other data that was created from Semco, that they have more current than from what the background.
Well, she, she means it is, and you're right, Kelly, it is a lot different than what it was, what was presented in that chart.
Right.
I, I know because I know some other communities around us are different.
Are you using the more current data? I looked at what metamorbid you think was more current data.
I, I agree with Kelly on that.
I kind of looked him in.
But how do we get the actual?
They're already updated.
Man, how do you get the right numbers in place?
I mean, 20 would do a census.
Well, 20, the census data will remain the same, but the, the Semco, you know, I wouldn't, we did the background studies, I think there's probably 2015.
So, you could update that.
It's just a matter of looking at, pulling a more recent report from that and just flopping within the tables.
Yeah, he got the 2015 data. So, that's what he run with, but we know that's not right.
Yeah. So, that's, the most current data we can use or utilize, even if it's some of this reference from, you know, different sources would be nice because it really does change things. Excuse me, my next point. We have a, you know, master plan that we already had, we still have an open space and greenway plan. So, you know, how that's going to get appropriated in, this was it. So, it's all supposed to be part of the whole concept of it, but we had all that and we still grew 112%. We still changed zoning from areas that were zoned five acres to 100. We have an extremely dense piece of privacy center town that's changed the look and character of it. You know, we have numerous people writing editorials, you know, including the gentleman sitting in our audience here about stop reckless zoning and overbuilding. That happened under this. This is just a very slightly modified version. It doesn't have any teeth, it doesn't have an exception to it, like, how are we going to stop the course of action we find on? We have a survey, the survey was quite definitive for what the people said, and it's, you know, it's what I hear. Roads are congested, we wanted to maintain this character, how are we going to do it? And I don't think this is a step in the right direction, I think it's just a step in a corrective measure in terms of rubber stamping and update. But we talked about, you know, I'm going to speak for hunt country, that North East section, integrating some trails. How are we going to preserve hunt country? You preserve it by, you know, putting in trails, putting in a plan, putting in some preservation, changing the land uses up there, allowed uses, so you don't allow compost facilities and auction yards. You know, nobody's going to make investments in that area when they see stuff like that, but they will when they see that we have a long-term plan for preservation of that area. And I'd like to see that addressed in this book. This is supposed to be planning for how many years though?
20.
And you're telling me I'm not going to see that stuff for 20 years if they put it on our plan? And that's where I am at with this. I think it needs more planning. And I'm just thinking one corner, but I'm saying now the whole community, what are our real strong plans? When we look at zoning, what are we going to look at, you know, changes? How much priority are we going to give traffic congestion and stuff when we make these decisions? We need something we can look back on the planning commission and say, our master plan says when we're looking at these zoning changes, we need to look at the whole thing. Is it connected to trails? Do they have access to roads? Is it going to increase congestion and all that? So, we can make better decisions than, than we've been making. That's, you know, a plan doesn't do any good if it doesn't have how we're going to do it in it, in a way that we can understand and follow. And I'm going to keep looking back, same plan, we're here today, nothing. Yeah, I can't point to anything in this plan and say, wow, look where Oxford's going. Look at our plan, we're going to, you know, have all this, we're going to network for trails, we're going to have all these things. You know, we have all these things in our area, let's focus on what we've got, so we can really point it out. In terms of, I did one little minor note, that the white space in the pages, I mean, it looks beautiful, but in terms of printing, everybody now has PDFs and stuff, we can expand on the page and blow up. But when you want to print out these sheets, there's so much white space on these plans. Is there someone written rule that the more pages, the better?
No, that's.
You could expand margins and, and take out white space and shrink.
A lot of the white space, I'm, I'm going to, when it gets, when the snow clears up, pictures. I'm going to add pictures and graphics. So, this isn't, and that's something we can do after the public hearings, doesn't change the contents, the, the text. But yeah, I was, and I.
This is white space, I'd like to.
Yeah, and I'd also invite, if you have any pictures, currently send them over to me and I can pop them in. But I was planning on filling a lot of that white space with, with graphics and pictures.
Okay. So, and my basic concern is just that we're not laying out enough of the vision and a real plan for 20 years. I'd like to see us thinking more about what we're going to do here, put it in this plan so we can start discussion on it.
Any other comments, Chris?
Uh, no.
Bert?
Well, I, I don't want to open up all kinds of discussion, but she, she's right in one respect that sometimes, you know, with certain districts, we're trying to do a better job and, and create things that are going to potentially set a better standard for certain areas. Of course, you know, I'm Mr. Pro Development sometimes too, and I look at industrial and I look at commercial properties and stuff, feel like there's expansion areas in there and we should create more district comparisons and stuff. But I just don't know how to get a full master plan draft done properly in a way we need to spend more time.
Well, we could put in the.
We need to.
A couple paragraphs on our vision.
Yeah.
Say that an amendment or a.
Yeah.
A supplement will be, we're going to focus on doing a supplement to the plan, which gives us another place to go. It kind of relieves the pressure of update, but puts in there, hey, look, something good's coming that we can.
And I'm not against that idea.
I think it's, you could do something similar to what we were talking about with subarea plan for village, you could do a quadrant plan, I think we township used to do them, focusing on the different quadrants of the township. And those could be more detailed because the master plan is, it's, it's a lot of township to cover, but if you're focusing on one part, you can go into more detail. So, if that's something that the planning commission wants, we can certainly add exploration of subarea plans as a potential implementation strategy or next step.
I'd be willing to go that, Rob.
Yeah, we've got a bunch of subareas, especially if we have.
I'd definitely.
Develop, that would be.
I'd certainly be willing to do that.
Okay.
Because that's, that just doesn't limit you to one district.
What do you think?
I don't know.
Well, I guess I want to go back to what your one comment was about how much we've grown in the past. What time period do you use, 10 years, 20?
Yeah, 112%.
So you think we grew too fast?
I think we couldn't have got better planning. I think we're just...
Well, if we grow too fast in total, that's what I'm trying to find out. We did.
Well, I think we have some...
Grew too fast because this book didn't.
Give us a means to make better decisions.
Well, okay, so you referenced a particular development in the center of the township that's too dense. I'm assuming I know what you're talking about. Whose fault was that?
This planning commission.
That's my point.
Right.
The planning commission had the decision not to allow that density to occur.
But we didn't have a book that really helped us point a finger at putting a road through and open space and connections. I'm just saying, sometimes it helps, if it helps one or two commissioners make a decision that might change or tilt things for the future. I mean, sometimes we were just really short sighted.
Well...
In my opinion, but, you know, I hear it a lot, that there's a lot of things that we saw here that went, why? It doesn't look like we thought it was going to look like.
Well, there was things that have developed in the past that I wasn't happy with, you know, but decision for the developments occurred here.
Right. Okay, so with the plan as presented, you've noted some of the changes that we've talked about. You've also noted about going into subcategories for like maybe the more east quadrant. I think most of us liked that idea. Saw a bunch of heads.
I like it. Let's look at it again.
Mr. Knowles, you liked it?
Yeah.
Kelly, I think you liked it.
Northeast.
So it's consensus that, yeah, that's, that would be a work ethic pursuing. We probably should address that and put that in there as well. So, next step.
What we do, the next step will be to forward it onto the township board. I personally think that a good idea would be to have a joint meeting with the township board, where we can discuss the master plan and we can also utilize that opportunity to talk about some of the ordinance changes that they're going to be seeing and that we want to see. So if that's something that the planning commission would like, I'd recommend trying to find a date that would work. And at that meeting, because it would be, it would be a quorum of both the township board and the planning commission, the township board could approve that plan for distribution on that night. If they're not comfortable with it, we can wait another month. But as long as they have a quorum, they could approve the draft plan for distribution, get that, get sent out, start the 63-day notice requirement for adjacent communities to provide their comment on that.
Next township board meeting is March 14.
So you're saying try to pick that date for a coordinated joint meeting?
Maybe one special. Yeah, I think it's special.
You do a special meeting.
I think that's such full meetings, really.
So I mean, we could, you could do it here as well, and it'd be, it could be a regular meeting for the planning commission, a special meeting for the township board, but just some, some time that all of us can meet to go over.
Is that with these revisions we're talking about tonight?
It would be with the update, yeah, with the revision.
Mr. Curtis, do you want me to run this past supervisor done and see how we'd like to do that?
I think, yeah, we're going to need his approval anyway, but it might be useful to have some potential dates in mind. If we do send it over to Mr. Dunn.
Yeah, it might be worthwhile there.
The township board has to post it.
We can't, we can't do anything this month yet, right? Is that true or not true?
We get a draft together of the wording this month, so we can have maybe something that we'd like to see inserted and copied in a couple, because it'd be a couple weeks. Just get that in and look at it.
I guess you can ask him to be to send something to you and then you could provide you with initial comments on that?
Yeah.
Um, you could, I could send it to you if you send me individual emails, as long as you're not talking as a commission outside of it. There's no problem with that. Deanna, do you have any comments about?
Yeah, I was going to look, why don't we, because I know everybody's back in town before MPA, we can do a Wednesday. That way you can have a couple planning commission meetings.
What Wednesday?
And it'd be like the 21st of March.
Well, she's projecting the 21st right now as a proposed date?
Yeah. On a Wednesday, the 21st is our post date. That allows you to have two meetings prior for planning commission if you want to make any changes, correct? Is that your discussion?
Yeah.
So I'll set it up in a motion and ask them for that date. I mean, that motion, a memo.
Okay.
Your Wednesday, Thursday?
Yeah, check.
We probably go Thursday. Don't you think that?
Oh, yeah. I don't know everybody's availability, but Wednesday night is usually...
Good for the board?
Yes.
It'll work for me.
March 14th is the March Township Board meeting.
You don't want to do it then?
No. What they normally do for special meetings, like our budget meeting, is the week before or the week after the township board meeting, and then Wednesday night.
So the 21st would probably follow suit?
I can't be there on the 21st.
Not on Wednesday.
I have board measure meeting and evening.
28. What do you think?
Seven, man, not even on me.
I know it.
I might be out of town by then. I want to be at the meeting. I'd really like to, I'd really like to do it by the 21st.
You know, I don't know why you don't do it on a Thursday. I don't know anybody on the...
I can go to a Thursday.
I don't want a Thursday.
I can go to a Thursday in March.
That would be our regular second meeting, right?
Or the 15th.
Or third, March 15th.
But we can't hold.
Go to March 15?
We can't hold. Township Board.
That's a Tuesday.
True.
Oh, I see what she's saying. She said the board has to hold the meeting and then we're just joining.
Can they hold split 6 o'clock on Thursday? How about if we run this by supervisor Dunn and see what day he can pick, choosing, not choosing March 21st?
Well, then what would we get, a memorandum on it?
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
So will this wait? It's tentative. It's in the air. Okay.
It has to be after the 14th, because I got people out of town.
Correct.
Well, if you wait too long, there'll be other people out of town.
I know.
That's what I meant.
Well, we could meet one hour before a planning commission, if we have to have a planning commission.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, Deanna, you'll find the date?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, that wraps up. About item 10. Two parcels to designate zoning instead of public hearing. Again, Matt, you want to give us a...
Yeah, I'll bring you up to speed.
That's very confusing, so try to keep that separate.
Is this upcoming right up here?
Yeah.
All right.
I read it twice.
Here's the spiel. This is the property where Oakwood Church, Chapel, correct? Chapel?
Well, they, they're calling it a chapel.
Yeah, it's not even getting, we're not getting to the use. Just talking about the zoning. Back in, sometime in the 90s, early 2000s, there was a map error that was made. And because it was signed by the clerk, it's the official township zoning map. So it's stuck. So what, it's currently zoned SF2. That whole, that whole, both of those parcels are zoned SF2. Back in the 90s, it was actually split zoned. So if you go down in that memo, please.
Yep. Looking at this beforehand, we go on to somewhere, but this is the house, correct?
Yeah, so there's the house and then the chapel is on that smaller property.
Yeah.
Here.
Yeah, that's right. 2750 is our church and the house is 2740.
This is kind of hard to see on this, but what it really should be, you know, back in the 90s, it was zoned where the front portion of it was R1 and the back portion was SF2.
After the slotted line.
Yes.
The dashed line.
To the east of the dashed line was SF2.
Takes a minute to coordinate the line on it.
Yeah, so that's actually, this might be a good one. If you, I can point. Everybody turn to me.
I already get where you're going, so I get it.
This block here was zoned SF2. And then everything to the west was R1.
Right.
Now, somewhere along the line of zoning error was, or map error was made, and everything got zoned SF2. So if we want to go back to what it was originally zoned, or what it should be, the front portion here would be R1. So we would need to rezone that to R1 and then the back portion would be SF2.
The eastern portion.
East property was split zoned.
Yes. Now, that's the next point. Split zoning is awful. I hate it. It causes a lot of problems. So we could use this opportunity to rezone the whole thing as R1. And that would alleviate any of the...
Which would be consistent with everything to the north.
Would be consistent with everything to the north.
Right.
Now, there'd be a little part here which would be a little inconsistent with SF2. But I think if you have for future lot splits, it causes a problem, because you don't know which zoning district to apply. For setback purposes, it causes problems administratively.
But we're only a recommending body.
You're recommending, but the zoning, the township board could revert it back to us to figure out what it should actually, what the application should say.
Well, I think to be consistent with the properties, it would be better as R1.
What's the master plan section?
We're split zoned.
I don't want a split zone, because then...
Thank you.
I don't want a split zone. It just kind of eludes everything when you do that. It just makes it too hard to do anything later.
What does the master plan say?
Oh, the master plan, I don't know.
Did an owner buy it as a split?
The master plan has this whole thing as actually institutional.
What?
That whole area?
Never mind.
That whole area, because it was probably based on what it was, the property was actually utilized as a church.
Oh.
It has, it has the whole, the whole...
Parcell. Now you're getting into a whole different foggy.
What goes up?
That's a future land. Use map and a master.
Yeah.
So that's another issue, but...
Did the current owner buy it, think it was split zoned?
The current owner thought it was all R1. They didn't realize that it was split zoned. And when I, when I went to go look at it, the current zoning map actually had it as SF2, a completely different district from what they thought it was.
To the records, when you look at the paper records interpreted trail of meetings and shit, it's split zoned.
Yes.
Somehow the map got changed.
Yeah, and somehow back when they, back in the early 2000s, because I went back and pulled out all the various versions of the zoning map, one map had it as split zoned and then the next one had it as SF2. And I tried, went back to that to see if there was any record of it being rezoned, and it was, there was no record.
So here's a, here's a question from sitting on the ZVA conference. We know you can't rezone by virtue of a ZVA action, but you can correct a mistake through a ZVA action. So why wouldn't the ZVA be addressed to find out, to make a determination if there was an error on the map, transposition there, and they can determine that error was made and it would revert back to the zoning?
I went through, the township attorney stated that because, I thought it was just a clerical error, since we have no record of a rezoning, that it was just the mapping. So I, I thought we could just go back and change the map to what it should be. Township attorney said no, because it was signed by the clerk. It's the official...
Right, that's for a ZVA action. Can make, a ZVA action can override the act of any individual or board.
Well, the ZVA can, can appeal. They can do interpretations and then they can appeal a decision.
Right. They get, what they're doing is appealing the decision of the person who created that map. And they can determine that the map was created in error.
Not the ZVA, but that would be, that's a legislative action. The ZVA can't hear, they can only hear administrative decisions. That's a legislative action.
Somebody made that map.
Yes, but it was signed by a legislative member, the clerk.
Right, which the clerk's decision can also be appealed by the ZVA. Any individual at the township unless, unless the ordinance expressly prohibits it. Any individual's decision, any group's decision, any board's decision, any one person's decision.
If it's administrative in nature.
Administrative in other words.
But because this deals with a rezoning, it's legislative, and it can't, that can't be, the rezonings can't be appealed to the ZVA.
There's a December 20th email dated that the township attorney says the map cannot be viewed as a clerical error, subject to administration modification as the map was officially signed by the township clerk.
That's what I didn't understand. If the township clerk officially signed it in error, that decision, it's harder to sign it.
But he's saying that it can't be viewed as a clerical error.
Yeah, I did some research on it. It just said different. That's why I didn't understand why an error can be, to be, I know that you can't rezone by virtual decision, but you can correct error.
Mr. Chair.
A map interpretation or anything.
Mr. Burger, we're here, I mean, basically for us right now, we're here in discussion just to decide on what we would like to have the property re-zoned, right? As a recommendation to the board, right?
Correct.
I'm all for R1.
Parcel number 0407101018 should all have the same zoning. And what we're to determine is what that zoning should be, correct?
That's what they asked.
That's what I meant, Texas. Okay. We are the ones that will recommend what it will be, or what the proper zoning is, correct? So let's discuss. Mr. Burger says R1.
Well, in particular, from my point of view, because everything north of there is R1. And it's, it's consistent then with the rest of the properties along Walden Road on the corridor there.
But doesn't that extend to their SF2?
But, but we're, we're going to have to draw the line somewhere.
I think that line is 071118. Okay?
Well, that's, yeah, that's...
That's where your line would be drawn, you know. We make the distinction there.
The property owners, if the property owners thought it was R1 in the first place, then it should just be an easy decision.
Well, you don't want to say that, because anyone can say, well, I thought it was personal.
Yeah.
But I think that...
We want it to be R1. They thought it was R1, so what's wrong?
Well, I think the only, the only issue, the only potential controversy here is this back portion of it. Because the western part of it should be R1, because that's what it was before the mistake was made. But now somewhere along the line, along the line, these parcels were combined. That back parcel was combined with the front, the western part of the property, creating the split zoning.
Can anyone, can anyone answer this for me? Does anyone know the size of this? And couldn't it be a split church or some...
In this picture, would that be split down to residential one properties?
Yes.
If you zone it?
So we cut this off? Could it be an island into itself at some point?
You'd have to know, you'd have to know exact square footage.
Yeah, heads.
I don't know that in front of me. But I, Mr. Chair, when I look at it, I look at 0407101019, the size of that lot is consistent with everything to the north, not consistent with what's to the south. So I want to draw the line in the south portion of that lot to make that R1 from everything there moving north, including the next lot, which is 18. So you go in lot 19, 18, and then into the rest of the north.
Right.
And just because it got combined, at this point in time, I believe it should be R1. Now, whether it can be reconfigured at some point into additional lots by doing a division or something, I don't know.
Look at that.
But I guess at that time, they would have to come and present that to someone to try and do that anyway. And that's not what's in front of us tonight. We're only, we're only depicting what we think it should be classified as for zoning.
Kelly, what's your thought? Zoning classified.
So the current's R1 to the north and for the south is what?
SF.
SF2.
2.
And yeah, that's what it's zoned today.
Yep. But look at the size of lot, 019. Can't make that SF. Can't make that SF2. Doesn't comply.
And just for point of order, or making a recommendation so that we can have a public hearing on it?
Really, really, we're making a recommendation to.
On the public?
To the clerk, really, who, who, the body or the person that's gonna fill out this application. Someone from the township's gonna fill it out, but they have to put in a zoning district to apply for.
Right.
They, the township board, I believe that it would be the clerk that would fill it out or the treasurer. They didn't know what to apply for. They wanted to see what the planning commission, that would be an appropriate district to apply for.
And then they have to set a public hearing.
And then, well, and then we, they would submit an application, we would set a public hearing at the planning commission. And then it would go back to the township board.
Yeah.
So I'm actually writing you a draft motion because I think this should be something that's on the record.
So we don't do section two under new business anyway, huh? So.
Not really.
That R3.
We'd have to have an application for it.
Yeah, but there's no application in yet.
When, when you take, when you consider zoning, you don't use our feelings. We use the like and surrounding the properties. One can make a case that the backside, you know, which has got more property, the split front or the split back? You know, you know, the, right now, it would be considered split zoning, which has got more property? The front or the back? I'm trying to find something that tells me we're doing it like the property. We've heard it's like the property going to the south. Now you have that big piece out in the back that is like the surrounding properties to the east and northeast and the southeast.
Well, Jack?
Yeah.
My opinion, when you look at the properties to the south, or excuse me, northeast?
Yes.
Those longer ones that are SF2, they're huge compared to that little piece that's called 2740 up there.
Right.
They're huge compared to that. So they don't, to me, that's not consistent with those other properties, even to the north, because you're coming in off Oakwood Road.
Right.
Those properties come in off Oakwood Road and they're a lot longer.
Correct.
And they're a lot larger. The other properties that are R1 on Baldwin Road are more consistent with obviously lot.
Right.
With R1, so to me, it's my, it's an opinion. I believe R1 is more suited.
Okay, I just, I just asked a question because we've always looked at the neighboring properties and I'm trying to put some value.
Try to put a size element to it.
A fact of, give the data, this piece of property.
But look at the size of those SF2s there.
Oh, yeah, I answered for a second, I didn't.
I'm looking at 07 zoning map here. And everything is yellow.
R1.
Yeah. Which is 07.
And then the other part is red, which is commercial?
Institution.
If they're current owner. No, it's a split zoning there. My 07 maps, sorry.
Uh, this, yes, so this map has all, there's, it's these two parcels, see these two little ones? And then this one that goes back, so it's all SF2.
It's all SF2s.
The whole part's everything.
Everything.
The parcel, the parcel lines aren't correct on that map, but if you draw and you meet the, um, what it looks like now, they're all SF2s.
What you're seeing, the yellow is not this property.
Correct. Mike, is this the recommendation after you come to state? I think it's a partial, Mr. Berger recommended. And there's the one property that's standing outside of it.
Stops.
The south side?
Next parcel.
Mr. Knowles?
With the first parcel green.
Excuse me. Any, any opinion on your, your?
It shows that it's all SF2.
I was R1.
Mike?
I was R1. Was mine.
Okay, but does this map show the entire parcel is SF2?
Yes.
So this map is 07. When, you have another map after this that shows something different?
No, everything from basically the 04 map on as a SF2. The mistake was made somewhere late 90s, early 2000s. So that map is incorrect. Well, it's technically correct because it was signed, but it should be a different district.
But this, I'm just trying to understand. It's like I'm hearing two different things. This map shows it's not split zoned, the entire property is zoned SF2.
Correct.
So is there another map dated after this that shows anything different?
A split, no, but the split zoning was where, before the mistake was made.
Right.
It was split zoned. So I think we're using this opportunity to, one, correct, correct the mistake, get the correct district, but also use an opportunity to get rid of that split zoning that was there previously.
Okay, so right now, currently according to the map, the property is all SF2.
Correct.
This map that I have shows it as institution, public institution.
That's future land use.
Oh, yeah, that's future land use. Okay, let me get the yellow out there. Existing land use. It still shows.
It's simply on the bottom right.
April 2017, it still shows.
That's not zoning, though, that's existing land use. The zoning.
Where is this all the map?
I'll take your map and range it free. Let's find out what the most current map we have on there is.
And so, current map shows SF2. So the point is.
The map is wrong.
The map is wrong, what should it be?
Correct, that goes back to that question to the, so. So are.
Are we sure the map is wrong? Did anything happen that changed all that that you don't have on record, you can't find?
I couldn't find it on record, so I'm assuming that it was a mistake on the computer. There was no formal rezoning ever recorded. That would have rezoned it from that split zoning to all SF2. Now, we're taking, using this opportunity to correct a mistake, but also correct a future potential problem with the split zoning.
They could have, they could have changed it SF2 given its current, the size of the lot, because it's not.
That wasn't meet, yes. Because they also did, in that time span, they also got a couple of land divisions. So that complicates it as well. But they got the land divisions, um, I don't know how, why they were approved. They shouldn't have been approved because the zoning district was wrong. It's a whole other story. Long story short, we have, we had this opportunity to rezone it. It should, because there was no formal rezoning ever, if you go back to what it was, it would be split zoned on the eastern, on the western side, it would be R1, on the eastern side, it would be SF2.
Can you say go back? So before 07, this was zoned differently on some map?
Yes, so at the 40, the 403 really, it was split zoned, east side SF2, west side R1. If there was no mistake made, no computer mistake, that's what the current map would show.
I think we all can agree we know about split, right?
Right.
Yes, okay. So we simply need to give a recommendation on what this panel believes it should be, correct?
Correct.
Can that be done by a straw vote of this commission?
I, well, I recommend just making a formal motion. Again, it's a recommendation and it's to.
Township.
To the township or the township in general, uh, as what you're recommending to rezoning to.
Okay.
I move to recommend that the township pursue a township initiated rezoning of parcel 0407-101-018 and 04-07-101-019 from SF2 to R1.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Curtis, supported by Mr. Berger. Any discussion on the motion?
Can you build a church on R1?
You can build a church on R1 as a special land use.
Not the hall.
We're talking.
I know, but I'm. I know, but I'm trying to.
It's irrelevant right there.
Right, right now, we're just talking about what it should be.
I know, but I'm trying to figure what's there and what's, we're facing down the road.
That's what I'm taking the feeling out of it by saying, find me some data that shows the property next to it, south, north, or east.
Any other discussion on the motion as presented?
I just still feel like I don't have enough information. The other map, what the other map show, what the progression shows. Yeah, not having that, I believe we tend that whole district was SF2. And if things were changed along the line. And, and not having anything that really, the concrete thing to change it other than SF2, I would keep it SF2.
Do we keep it SF2? I, I don't believe that, well, it's rest of two dozen.
No.
So why, why would that be?
What's this?
I don't understand why you put something that doesn't qualify as SF2. There's two different pieces here, though, so it's got to be one or the other. So for me, I'm in favor of the, uh, I think that.
Find out in a vote?
Yeah. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing that, let's move. Those in favor of the motion to, as the name calls?
Do you want roll call?
I would think you would, but.
Okay.
Talking about zoning.
Roll call, Mr. Honwick?
This is mine. Yeah.
I just want anything. Turn your extra page.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Commissioner Spiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Knoll?
Yes.
Commissioner Curtis?
Yes.
Commissioner Berger?
Yes.
Commissioner Honwick? No. Commissioner Young?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Moving on to item number 11, communications or committee reports. Economic Development Committee. Mr. Curtis?
How we met last night, um, for the first time in a few months. We will not be meeting in April or March due to zoning board appeals or zoning assessment. We back up tax assessment tribunal meetings. That's what we are. We just worked on our event schedule. We gathered some automation alley articles. And we discussed the experience of Oxford. And we talked a little bit about Tough Mudder. And lacrosse tournaments and large venues coming to town.
Okay, ordinance review committee.
Uh, we had a meeting tonight, uh, first one that I know of for the year. And went quite well. We're working currently with the solar energy systems component of it. And we have a very good start. We have looked at several different ordinances from other communities and depicted certain components from some communities and put them together. And we think what we'll have is a very good proposal to bring to this planning commission soon. We'd need another meeting at least for this, uh, but we have a very good head start on it. And then we'll be working in some of the other areas that we still need to draft criteria for. But tonight was just kind of a good start for where we're, we think we're headed down the road here. So we are moving in the direction of having a solar energy systems ordinance. And we think we're on a good track to get that for you soon.
Great.
Can I ask what the priority list is? Because solar energy was farther down than some of the others.
Well, the other, there was two of them that were in front of us, according to, and I only had this chart given to me as current, that are at township board for approval, and that was the non-performing lots and the street, the street tree requirements. And the other one is a zoning criteria in group one. So I started right with group one. And we didn't do the zoning criteria tonight because we didn't have time to get to it. So you're, you're saying we should have started with that first?
Well, it's been, that was the next thing, that, I mean, we already had so much work done on it.
Well, there were so many comments, I guess, prior to this meeting that I kept hearing about from the solar energy systems component. And I had already collected data on that earlier than this month. And so that's why, I guess, we got started with it, might have been because of me. But only because there's been other outside conversation in regards to where we're headed with it. I didn't have anybody asking about the zoning criteria, but I'll be happy to work on that also.
Because what I submitted was the, the complete set of all of the zoning districts. So that we should make, make copies for everyone, that was all done? Go through it, did the general?
I'd love to. I'll, I'll tell you what, we'll definitely work on it for you.
No, because that's, that's what was all done.
And I wouldn't mind, I don't have that in front of me tonight, but I'd like to see that.
Because, I mean, there's figures of people that are mad that it just keeps getting ignored. And street trees became more important and now solar panels became more.
Well, I'd be happy to look at that next, or at the same time. I'll do it simultaneously then. So I'm not trying to move one directly in front of another or after. If somebody else has something after that point that you just made, I'll be happy to look at that one next. Yes, we only get so many, we only get so much time to do it, I guess, but I'll be happy to look at it simultaneously. We thought we did quite well tonight with what we moved forward with, and we'll try to do the same thing next time.
There was, at the zoning training meeting, the county is putting out, the county? I think, uh, what was it on, uh, science, uh, science, right?
Well, science is another issue that we have in front of us.
Science or solar?
I have a solar.
No, 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 the county is drafting a model sign ordinance?
Sign ordinance.
Yeah.
So that is going to relieve you of some of that because they're going to be dra, and it's almost done, if I remember.
Well, that's down on the bottom of this list.
Yeah, so we haven't, I mean, I'm not trying to.
We haven't even spent any time on that yet.
I was just pointing that out because it's, it's being done for us, um, at somebody else's expense, so. Pardon?
Your passion.
Yeah, well, I mean, it, and no additional cost.
I'm not pushing it up.
For, for the county to answer.
It's very convoluted or threatening.
Yeah.
I said we would.
Letting you know that, um, yeah, and I think looking at the ordinance, uh, uh, the, the land use is kind of taking work discussion tonight on the, you know, master plan here. You know, it's a thing we have to start doing now, so that would be good.
Planner reports.
I have one more question on the EDSC one, you skipped right by that.
Uh, no, he reported on it.
He did, but then you moved right on to the next one. Just a little feedback for that. That one-stop-ready part, it kind of ties into all of this. Can we be looking at the township level about making us more true to what the one-stop-ready says it's supposed to be? Meaning access on the website, minutes, agendas, things like that, they're not on there? And when you look at the one-stop-ready, that's stuff we're supposed to have? It's supposed to be very user-friendly for people to kind of see what's going on? And, and we just haven't updated our site with all those things? And it is something we're supposed to have if we're gonna have that one-stop-ready up there?
Well, it's a recommendation and a guide one-stop. But if we have corrections to our website, I can address those.
Yeah, I'm just saying maybe if we could put the minutes and things like that on there? They're not on there. There's no reason not to have them.
I agree.
You know, and agendas, just if people can look there first, they can answer a lot of questions. A lot of reforms and stuff around there, which is great.
We constantly make, uh, suggestions to improve our website, both in the township and the village, based off one-stop criteria.
Yeah, I ran through all that, they had the great things to it. I thought, boy, if we just look at that and we work towards it, that would be really good. I see why they do it.
I'd be glad to submit anything that's not being done. I can't check everything, but I'd be glad to submit it.
Is that it for that? Okay, the planner reports. Carlisle Whitman, anything else?
I do not have anything else, thank you.
Jerk's not here. We decided number 13. Meeting adjourned.